Okay. Good evening. Welcome to the Town of Brookfield Select Board Meeting for February 16, 2023. Please rise and say what?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you. Okay, announcements, I don't see it written on here, but I'm going to add an announcement, though Kelly helped me out. The next election, the papers are available for people to draw.
Yes.
And I know there's at least Planning Board, Select Board, Library Trustees. I think the announcement is on the Internet.
It's actually on the town webpage. One second, and I will tell you exactly what's what and where.
Great. While you're looking that up, I just want to indicate that we're approving the previously signed warrants FY 23-16 AP for $487,975.54, FY 2316 payroll $190,881.69, and fiscal year 2316 withholding warrant for $29,917.32.
So here are your terms and people, and if you scroll up, it'll tell you the
The dates.
Taking out the paper.
Okay, as of February 6, nomination papers for Brookfield Annual Town Election will be available at the Town Clerk's Office. The following offices and terms are open to candidates: moderator, one-year term; selectman, three-year term; assessor, three-year term; Planning Board, five-year term; Elementary School Committee, three-year term; Water Commissioner, three-year term; Board of Health, three-year term; Board of Health, one-year term; trustee for Merrick Public Library, two- and three-year terms; and then Cemetery Commissioner, three-year term; and Tax Collector, three-year term. The deadline to return the papers is March 13. Last day for the registrars to certify those papers is the 27th, and last day for candidates to withdraw without appearing on the ballot is the 27th of March. Last day to register to vote is the 21st of April, which is 10 days prior to the election. Any questions about any of that? And the election itself will be May 1 of 2023, from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. for in-person voting. All right. First person on the agenda is the Highway Department relative to DER Colford Grant. Can you just give your name, even though most everybody knows who you are?
My name is Robert. I'm the superintendent.
Okay, great, thanks.
All right, so, can I just start?
Yeah, please.
So I give you guys the cost estimate. It was updated about two weeks ago for the Rice County Crossroad in Colford. And we would like to apply for a grant between the Highway Department and Kathy LaRaca, but I feel like we're going to have to put some money towards it. The grant's really not designed to be fully funded by the state, so I think the town would have to put some money forward. And if you want, Kathy and I thought that might be like the contingency of $56,711.
Now, is this the culvert over where you were talking about, like at the end of the cul-de-sac? Is this out there different?
No, this is a different one. So last year, we actually got a small grant for this exact same culvert to bring it back. So it's back up again. Probably about five years ago, we had it designed for this grant before I was here. And then debt permitting and design and everything went outdated because we never made a grant for it. So then they gave us another grant to bring it back up to speed. We'll bring it in, the design and all that stuff, because it has the OT permit that had to be updated. So that's all been done. So now we're basically shovel-ready, and the next step is to apply for a construction grant.
Okay, so let me restate what I think I heard. Is that you're looking to apply for this Division of Ecological Restoration Grant?
Yeah.
And it specifically aligns on culverts?
Yeah.
Our project absolutely, if it was running perfect to current quoting, would be just under the $400,000 threshold, which is typically their max.
Right.
And while hypothetically, you could 100% fund the project, what you're looking for is kind of a nod to pursue the grant for the estimated cost, understanding that typically you put a contingency amount on top of any project, right? And that you'd be looking to put probably on the warrant, I would assume as a warrant article, the 15% contingency associated with the project.
Yeah.
Okay. And that would encourage transparency, because we're not just going to bake it into Chapter 90 or bake it into highway expenses. We're going to say, hey, this is the project, this is the grant, this is the amount that we want to ask the town to support it.
And, you know, it's kind of like a vague thing going after instructions, since they just gave us the money last year to bring it up to speed, and if it's way too long, we don't want to apply in this grant cycle, we'll be back to where it was.
No, I think it's great that we're like basically following the cycle, and I hate to put it this way, chasing the dollars to bring it back to the town.
Yeah.
When does the application due?
So, any day now, they're going to, the RFR is going to come out. It was supposed to come out after today, and we didn't see it. So any day now, we can.
It says the estimated date is mid-March, but it's not actually live yet. Okay.
So, you know, for town meeting, or whatever, however we fund the $56, we could be contingent on getting the grant.
Right, right, absolutely.
We can get the grant first.
Yep. So, and yeah, we could put it on the warrant if we get the grant, if we get the grant and the grant information comes back prior to town meeting, we can let folks know.
Yeah, the warrant would be until July or after.
Okay, so the vote could be allowing us to set it aside, contingent on getting the grant.
Yeah.
Those are generally decently received, especially when 85% of the budget would be coming from the state.
Yeah.
All right, so what do you need from us tonight? Do you want us to vote to go ahead and set this aside as a warrant article for the through town meeting?
I would just like the support, or, you know, just to pursue the grant, put in the application, and then probably follow through with putting some through for the like for town meeting.
And you're already working with Kathy on this?
Yeah.
So she's aware of it?
I know.
This isn't going to be a surprise?
No.
Okay.
So a motion to pursue the grant?
Okay.
To authorize Ryan and Kathy to pursue the grant? And then, I guess, a promise to keep the, put the warrant article on to cover the cost?
Yeah.
So I'll make a motion for Ryan and Kathy to pursue the grant and put a warrant article for the funds if needed.
All right, I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, that's a deal. Thank you for bringing this forward, and thanks for following up on going that way.
Thank you.
Do we have anything else specifically for you?
You know that the Kimball Road hearing is, but it doesn't start until 7:00, so.
Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda for public hearing is a vote on early voting for the next election. So let's talk about this one.
The early voting automatically happens unless you vote not to do it. This is only for the local election. The Town Clerk's Office was completely overwhelmed the last time, and they're asking that you vote not to approve early voting for the local election.
So say that it's of the election committee.
Did he provide any information regarding how many people did vote by mail and how many people did come in for early voting versus?
He did not, no.
Okay. And what's 45 days before the election at this point?
Well, the election, we just looked at what the election date was.
Right, so 45 days beforehand is what, middle of, so it's May, April is 30 days?
May 1 is the election day.
So we have until the middle of March to make that decision, correct?
Mm-hmm. The registrars have already voted not to do it.
What, not to have?
Not to have early voting, yeah. So you can get more information from him and put it on your next meeting agenda.
I would like to do that, because I would like to know how many people we might be limiting their accessibility to voting by not allowing early voting, because it sounds like early voting would also include vote by mail. Because the way this requirements piece is written that was included in your email, it indicates vote by mail is required for all elections, including special elections and preliminaries, unless the selectmen, board of selectmen, you know, vote to opt out. So it does sound like no excuse vote by mail is available.
It's always available for federal and state.
It's always available for federal.
It's just the local.
Right. But I mean, we get such little participation in local elections anyway. How many people are we going to, are going to opt out of voting if they don't have the mail-in voting option? I don't know that I feel really good about that.
So what happens if you vote yes and the registrars vote no? Now you have, what's, I don't know what the end result today is.
Yeah, well, then you have an issue.
Can we ask them to come to the next meeting and have a discussion around it?
The Town Clerk and the registrars, or just the Town Clerk?
Either both.
Okay.
Invite them both. We'd like either or, or both. Okay. But I, and I understand, I understand what they're saying, and I understand it's a burden, but it's also, if it's that hard, we need to figure out how to make it easier, is my opinion. Besides not doing it, is there any way to make it more efficient and easier for them? What do we need to do? So, okay, so vote to appoint special municipal employees. I mean, you're welcome to.
No, no, I'm on the same page.
No, I, are you talking about the special municipal?
No, no, no.
No, I was about to.
Okay.
If you wanted to make a motion, that's fine, but there's two of us, so we'd have a hung jury.
No, I mean, if there was a lot of people that took advantage of it, and now all of a sudden you're shutting it off, you're potentially alienating a lot of people.
Yeah, and I don't know, I just, I'm not comfortable with that, unless I know what the metrics look like, so.
You know, let the public, do you want me to just vote the camera right on this topic?
Oh, yes. Yeah, it is, go ahead. Do you have an opinion?
Yeah, if you've got a voting date, people should just be able to come and vote on that day. What are we going to have, two months in advance?
Not everybody, not everybody works local.
Okay, so they can come in a week or something, like 45 days, two months ahead?
No, that's not, that's not what it is. It's not that there's early voting for 45 days before the election. It's that in order to not, in order to opt out as a community from any form of early voting, we have to, we have to vote no less than 45 days prior to the election to not do any amount of early voting.
Yeah.
Okay. Now, the early voting itself, I think, is usually like a week or two beforehand. It's not 45 days early.
There's, there's, no, it's definitely not 45 days early, but I don't know exactly what the timeline is, and it's a lot more complicated to do the early voting and expensive, but I'll let them express that.
Right, I would rather.
Because I don't have any of the actual numbers, so I don't know.
Yeah, I'd like to know what's the actual cost, how many people avail themselves of the early voting. I hate to put it this way, if they were overwhelmed by it, that means probably quite a few people did it. Maybe we need to get better at it. I don't know. It is 2023, we should be able to figure this out. So, I think we should be encouraging public participation, not trying to limit it, so long as people are registered voters, so. I have an empty folder around appoint special municipal employees.
You do? And the reason being is, I wanted it on the agenda because I was hoping that we could do a blanket vote, appointing, making all of the positions who qualify under the statute special municipal employees, without having to go through and figure out which ones are and which ones aren't, because the statute's very specific, but it allows for certain The ethics rules apply differently to special municipal employees than they do, which allows people to hold more than one position and not have it be a conflict, and other aspects of working for a municipality. However, the Ethics Commission has said that you have to specifically enumerate the position. So I don't believe, under my research, which I finally found something definitive this afternoon, I don't believe that we can do it that way. We have to do it by the position itself. They have to be specifically listed, because it says specifically enumerated. So my reading of that is that it needs to be, and we don't have a list of who is now or what positions are and what positions are not. They cannot currently put their hands on the list, which is, I'm going to reach out to the Ethics Commission, because they were supposed to file a copy of it with them as well. And then we'll be able to start going through and appoint, making these positions special municipal.
Got it. Fabulous. So the process has started?
The process has begun, yes.
Wonderful, because we need to make sure that the same 13 people that do everything are legal to do everything.
Exactly my point, yes.
All right. So it's not 7:00 p.m. yet, so we're going to skip over item four and continue down to item five, the Liaison's Discussion.
We could probably pass over that without Tom being here.
Okay. So we're going to pass over that budget review.
That can be quite timely. Would you like to complete the rest?
We could skip over that and come back to it and take it out of order.
And look at the resignations and do the appointments.
Let's look at resignations. We currently have three resignations. We have one from Reserve Officer Daniel Driscoll, as of the 13th of February, and he just hasn't been able to make time for us as a part-time police officer, because he's got a full-time job as a firefighter now. So we thank him for his service. He's been with us since April of 2018, and he's been a good officer. So I presume we would accept his letter with regrets and send him a nice note thanking him for his service. We have Danielle Orboza resigning from Cultural Council due to a schedule change that she, she's no longer going to be able to participate. And then we also have one from Lois O'Leary relative to the 350th Committee. She plans on helping with the events, but just isn't, is going to leave the committee portion of it to others. So we accept all three of those with regrets, and can we send those out letters?
Mm-hmm.
We need to vote on that.
No.
So we do have one appointment for the 350th Anniversary Committee for a Mr. Donald Taft.
Do we know him?
So I'll make a motion to appoint Donald Taft to the 350th Anniversary Committee.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. We have Cemetery Dean for a lot.
He doesn't do the lots anymore. He said he just does the names.
Oh, okay. It says Lot Number 11-A, Section C.
Well, he wouldn't give me the number. He told me it was mile and a half.
So, so can I get a motion to sign the Cemetery Dean for?
Make a motion to sign the Cemetery Dean for Lot Number 11-A, Section C in the Brookfield Cemetery.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and then we've got several sets of Select Board minutes to approve, one from 1/26/23, one from 2/223, and one from 4/1817. Did you get a chance to review them in advance?
Yeah.
Great. So can I get a motion about those?
So I'll make a motion to approve the Select Board minutes for 1/26/23, 2/223, 4/18/2017.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Question, I was confused here. Why do you approve the one from 2017?
Because the law requires that all minutes be approved, and we're playing catch-up from prior years where they weren't.
So even though we.
And it's the only one?
No, no, no.
Oh, no.
We've been doing, we've been doing basically almost every meeting we've had, whatever ones we had from this year, plus one from 2017, sometimes two. So, and we don't, and by law, we didn't have to have been there to approve the minutes, so long as we have reasonable expectation that they're an accurate rendition of what occurred at the meeting. So if we choose to, we can, in most instances, review the tapes and go check it out.
That's actually how the minutes are being done. Karen's actually reviewing the tapes and doing the minutes from the recordings.
So, and then can I get a motion to acknowledge the Cultural Council minutes from 1/9/23?
I make a motion to acknowledge the Cultural Council minutes for 1/9/2023.
Second that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. It looks like, according to what came out of that, we're going to be having McGann's marching band and Lincoln Minutemen for Memorial Day. Things move along. Since we can't have the public hearing until 7:00 p.m., let's start the budget discussion, and then we can put the budget discussion on pause for.
Sure.
The public hearing.
I have compiled all of the information sent and put in a spreadsheet, and I shared it with the board yesterday after trying to make sure all the numbers were right and consistent with what I was given. I also sent it to all the boards, committees, department heads, anyone, I hope I didn't miss anyone, but everyone who submitted a budget.
You gave the budget back.
Should have gave them. I sent them the same spreadsheet that I spent, sent to you for transparency purposes, so you're all seeing the same thing at the same time. I did ask them to reach out if there were any typos. I did get an update from the library yesterday, which was not entered into the data, so that is now in the new one that you have. There's an update in that. The Library Trustees voted on the 13th to incorporate the longevity pay into the base pay for the director.
Okay.
So there's longevity is.
Right, it's part of something that was voted, yeah, at town meeting.
Right.
Yep.
And so that's something that, longevity is a thing that you get for being there. It's not, shouldn't be part of your base pay, or normally isn't part of your base pay, because every time you get your raise, it includes, it's bumped up on top of the longevity as well.
Ew.
And so when you put it in the budget itself, it can be in the budget, so she'll absolutely get it.
Right.
But next year, the percentage will be the percentage plus the longevity, plus more longevity.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
You see what's happening?
Yep.
So it's actually being kind of double-counted, or not double-counted, but it's.
Well, I think, I think, let's table that and what, and talk about it with regards to, because the reason to incorporate it that way is that for tax purposes, for the people receiving it, they don't get like a one-time like hit with regards to their taxes. And that may have been the intent without realizing.
Yeah, I'm sure there was no ill-intent whatsoever, but just something to think about.
But I think that's part of the, we could always do, let's, when we, well, actually, this is part of this discussion, because when we start talking about the wage increases, that's one of those things that could be backed out before the percentage increase is calculated on an annual basis.
Yeah.
When we did that, individuals like.
This year, I have a warrant article for the longevity as a lump sum for everyone who qualifies for it.
Okay.
The library is included in that.
Got it.
So that will need to be corrected, but that's a warrant article that, because it's not part of salary, it's basically a thank you.
Right.
So, and a reward for staying with the town and being.
Should that be a warrant article, or where it would functionally be a recurring expense? Should it be on the operational budget, but as a separate line item?
I put it on the warrant article, not because it needs to stay there. I put it there so I wouldn't forget to do it.
Got it.
Because I didn't know about the longevity when we did last year's budget or the warrant.
Ah.
And it was brought to my attention afterwards that everyone was supposed to be getting longevity who qualified for it. So I threw it in my, so I started the warrant like the day after last year's town meeting.
Right.
And I started putting in warrant articles as placeholders to remind me, so wherever you want to put that, it can go there. I'm just letting you know that it's already been calculated.
It's already baked in and calculated.
Yeah, it's baked in. And it's a reason appropriate, so it'll be part of the base budget.
Right, it doesn't matter functionally, it's more of a case of.
Yeah, so that's something to think about, that's all.
Yep.
I got the police budget today.
Question about this longevity pay. It's a scope on how many people have applied to, what are your criteria?
No, because I don't know those numbers off the top of my head. And that wasn't, that's something that's in the towns.
It was by law that we, it was by law that we voted last year.
And so it's got to get paid regardless, but I don't know the numbers off the top of my head, because I did the calculation. Like I said, I did this last year when I started this year's warrant, and it's a placeholder, so.
Can you just forward that information to the?
Oh, yeah, sure.
Could you explain that a little bit more, like, so Kevin?
Yeah. It's something we voted at town meeting last year, and I don't remember the scale. We'd have to pull up the copy of the bylaws to go look it up, but I think it starts at like, I think it's at, I don't know if it's at 510 or what have you, but at different year levels, there's a, okay, the first one starts at 5. It's pretty nominal at that point, but it's something. And basically, when you hit a certain number of years of service, you get a, you get an annual, let's call it stipend, for having reached that level.
And what's the stipend?
It varies based on the year.
Well, let's say five years. Let's say 10 years.
Well, that's the thing, we don't, we don't have those numbers without pulling it up.
It wasn't explicitly on the agenda. It's available publicly if you want to look it up, or we can have it at the next meeting, okay?
Yeah, look at it next week. It sounds like more free money being given by the Town of Brookfield.
It sounds like something that the Town of Brookfield voted to give their employees at the last town meeting, so it's not for us to say whether it's right or wrong, because the townspeople spoke.
No, it's mine, it's, I just said the way I see it.
That's the way you see it, that the townspeople spoke.
And I have the right to speak. I'm a resident, and that's how I see it.
Well, we appreciate your opinion. Actually, technically, this is not part of the public hearings, so you don't. So, though through me, I can, I can provide a little bit of leeway to allow you to speak on that one. But anyway, you're welcome.
Appreciate that.
All right, so let's get back to the, to the topic at hand with regards to the budget. So this is before everybody at this point, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, yes and no. So I updated it with the police.
Okay.
Information, the new library information.
Okay.
And, but that hasn't gone out to the other boards, because I just got that like literally this afternoon for the PD. So we have a larger base number. And I asked the, like I said, I asked the other boards and committees to check what I had put in the spreadsheet, to make sure that I didn't transpose anything or miss a number or. So what you're looking at for the bottom line on the last page, if it's voted exactly as presented.
Currently, does this, this, this doesn't have anything baked in. Currently, does this, this, this doesn't have anything baked in for salaries yet, correct, or no? What's, what is-
So these columns here, this is your column, and this is advisory's column. This is what was requested only. And some people didn't know what to request, so they level funded their budget for salary. Some people went with the, with the federal COLA because that was, was stated at previous meetings. And some people put in like 3%, some put 2.5%, some put 7%, some put 9%.
So it's all over-
So it's all over the board, which is fine. People can put in what they, what they want to request. It's up to you to decide if you want to apply a specific COLA across, across the board. That's, that's up to the selectmen, what they're going to recommend based on what was presented by the-
Yep.
Most of the requests that we saw included a COLA, included specifically 8.7%. So I don't know if these department committees started to use that percentage or told that it was a federal COLA, but 8.7% was what we saw.
Yeah, I think, I think, I think they may have done that based off of the fact that two years ago, I think, we started using, two or three years ago, we started using the federal COLA. I don't think anybody foresaw a year where suddenly we're going to be looking at 8.9%. So I think we're going to need to have some frank and open discussions with the department heads that that's not necessarily going to be the route that we're going to go, but that we need to come up with some solution that is market appropriate, but equitable, right? Yeah. So, and that's part of the discussion that, that I wanted to have tonight, is that Kelly did do some research about what other towns are doing, other towns right now that are, and, you know, it's, it's not necessarily just surrounding towns. She kind of looked at it, put out feelers, I hope you don't mind me speaking for you.
Oh, no, absolutely.
Okay, go right ahead. She put out feelers regarding like what towns are doing. Most town budgeting, and I get where Brookfield and it's, and we like to say that we do whatever Brookfield wants to do, but I just want to let people know because a lot of the changes that we've made historically have been to, based on the Collins Center survey, our intent with that and with the pay adjustments that we did at that time was to at least ensure that Brookfield could attract the right type of, attract and maintain the right type of talent based on having market-appropriate salaries, okay? So the Collins folks came in, they did an overall market analysis. They told us where we had gaps relative to, you know, comparative towns. We made some, I think it took us two years, but we made most of the Collins Center adjustments. And then at the time that we did the Collins Center adjustment, we said, hey, we're going to use federal COLA, because typically it was running 2% to 4%, somewhere in there, to set, to set raises. Well, there's no company out there that's matching what the federal government COLA is right now. Though they are, I can tell you from my own experience with my own company, we got a, we got like a 25% higher merit pool. So instead of 3%, we had 4% to distribute this year as a nod to the fact that, you know, there's some wage inflation out there along with regular inflation. The information that she's been able to gather so far is that towns are going between 2% and 6%. Let me just finish, okay? Towns are going between 2% and 6%.
Yeah, did you send an email to us on that?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, okay.
It was a spreadsheet that I sent you.
But then they're also exploring certain things that are like hybrid approaches, where they might be doing like 2% or 2.5% across the board, but then for lower-level wage earners, or no, not for, everybody's also getting like a plus 75% raise, which then for lower wage earners, that's a much bigger percent.
Right.
And for higher wage earners, it's, it, they may not even notice it, but at least there's some equity there. So it's, it's a little bit more of a progressive raise where the impact for lower wage earners is greater than it is for the higher wage earners.
And actually, it's, I think it's more fair because everybody's getting the same raise, basically.
Right.
You know, when you look at the spreadsheet that, that was in your email, some of the lower ones that you'll see, because more of them are in the 3% to 4% range, the, the lowers that are 2% have a 3% step increase as well.
Right, so they're really a 5% raise.
Right, so most of these are actually between 4% and 6% than they are 2% and down. So I sorted it by tax base, I sorted it by the percentage of raising appropriate to the overall budget. There's all different ways you can play, I sorted it all kinds of different ways. Anyway, another thing that I did today was I pulled up the federal COLA history, going back to 1975. And, and the average, when you put them all together, is 3.78 a year.
That's a 3.5%.
But the years, the 80s, when they were, we were in the recession, it was, you know, 9, 14, 11, and then it dropped back down to 7, 3, and then 1, 4. So they, they run a wide range, but you can see a little bit of uptick when the economy was really bad.
Bad.
So I have that history for you to look at as well.
So, I, I know we don't have Tom here, so I don't-
No, it's 7 o'clock, it's time to start the hearing. How about wait?
You know what, actually, since Marty has been very patient and he has waited, I will entertain Marty's questions or comments first, and then we'll move to the town, to the public hearing.
Okay, so I also can't, this local town hiring increases, both of us, we are 23, we are projected increase. This one here is 24, I'll present that information to the board.
Sure.
Thank you.
I'm going to give Karen the source of this data, so if you want to review the comments, we can have people that provide the information.
Yep.
So nobody looks like they're in the 4% to 6% range.
I can only give you what they responded to.
Yeah.
Actually, Warren is in there.
What did Warren say, what did Warren say to you?
No, Warren isn't in the study.
Okay.
But this wouldn't necessarily affect those other wage increases, right?
And it also does-
Oh, no, it just gives me more data.
It just gives you the-
Yeah, and it just, and it also, did you ask about step for any of these towns?
I mentioned if there were other impacts to the increase that you could have mentioned.
Can I see that you have?
That's not necessarily, that's not necessarily true. People sometimes answer the question that you asked.
Answer the question as stated.
If you would, yep.
So who's Michael Zalinski from North Brookfield?
I don't remember all their positions, I usually contacted the, either the advisory committee or the board of select.
Okay, because the first one I see is from a town clerk. But, yeah, this is, this is good. The more information we have, the better, right? How come Barry's not on your list?
That's the same thing I got when I called.
Okay, how come Barry's not on your list?
Barry, did you get that from the internet?
No, he's got Jessica, actually, the TA from Barry. They don't have a projected COLA for 24 yet, that's why.
Yep.
Cool, the more information we have, the better, right?
Yep.
Thank you.
So, yeah, if you could follow up and get them on the sheet, including the other data that goes along with it, it'll give us a good feel for it, so. Great, so, but like I said, we're not making a decision about that tonight anymore. It's more about the, we need to have the discussion.
Right.
Yeah, is the whole budget completed already? I didn't know that.
Well, we have a draft regarding what's been requested. So what hasn't occurred yet is either select board recommendations or advisory committee recommendations. So we've got, we've got a, a copy of a draft budget, you know, it's kind of like how we kept budgets, like as a rolling process. Yeah.
We're not, we're not, we're not-
No, it's all, all the data is aggregated to what was requested. We haven't gone through the process of vetting, approving, and formally recommending. But what we're not doing is waiting until after all that's done to put the damn thing in a spreadsheet. So right now, all the data that's fit to print is in the spreadsheet so that it's a working, living document.
That's always the way it should be done.
That's the way it should be done, but we tend to break it or not have clean data or have mismatched copies floating all over the place. We're trying to avoid that by centralizing it with Kelly. So we're going to hit pause on the budget discussion in order to start the public hearing about the FY 22/23 CDBG, I can never say that properly, application public hearing. So I'm sure I have verbiage I'm supposed to read for this.
Chris, did you have?
There is paperwork I gave you. All right, so we are opening, we are opening the public hearing. Yep, I did, I found it. My copy looks just like your copy, sir. Do you need to come up and speak with us?
If you'd like me to.
Yeah, sure. You want that?
You make amends.
You make amends, please. Sit, introduce yourself, and have at.
Good evening, my name is Christopher Dunphy. I'm a principal planner with the Central Massachusetts Regional Planning Commission. I want to thank the town of Brookfield for inviting me here this evening to talk about a proposed grant application to the FY 22/23 CDBG, Community Development Block Program. So just a little background about the program. It's a federal program that started in early 1970s. And HUD is the federal organization that is responsible for its overall administration. By and large, not by and large, every year appropriations are made to fund the CDBG program because, you know, and it has occurred because it's a popular program. The vast majority of funds go to what they say, they call them "tunnelment cities", based on formula automatically. You know, here's the formula, here's the money for cities to resolve some of their, their urban issues. And what remains goes to state governments, who provides a competitive program for smaller communities, such as Brookfield. Brookfield and other small communities throughout the state can apply annually to the Massachusetts Department of Housing and Community Development. Typically, funding for this, this program used to match out at $800,000. But this particular year, because the DHCD is sort of behind largely due to COVID, they, they've sort of consolidated and they're, they're putting two programs together in one year and calling it the FY 22/23 CDBG. And consequently, they're allowing more funds for this particular year. So I've been working with town officials to, to come up with a viable program that meets the criteria under the program. And we identified Kimball Street, okay? Kimball Street, as I see, is, is the last street really in the village center, south of the town hall, that really hasn't been addressed. And it, it's got high needs, this street is in extremely poor condition, it's very narrow. Talked to residents in the street that complained about drainage problems, significant drainage problems, and that's going to be a, a large portion of this particular proposed project. Basically, I have a, a small little excerpt I'll read regarding what the project will entail. So this project will fund engineering design services and the subsequent physical improvements to approximately 1,400 feet of Kimball Street from the intersection of Mill Street to the intersection of Hyde Street. Incidentally, Hyde and Hayden were previously funded by CDBG. So we're just continuing to, to follow previous work and try to wrap up the improvements in this particular neighborhood. So the work involves the rehabilitation of road and sidewalk, improvements to the stormwater drainage system, and up to three replacement fire hydrants. As part of the design effort, an examination and public participation process will occur involving the possibility of making the street one-way. And this is, was driven largely by the fact that if you're driving along Mill Street, there's a blind turn there, and it's difficult. Oh, they have?
I think, I think, it was like a decade ago when they had at least one fatal accident at that corner.
So it's good information to know because I'd like, you know, data, whatever we have, if someone has information about that, to let me know so I can include it into the grant application.
I could be wrong, but I think that's the area that they had it. It was a while ago, but still.
So in addition to the hazards, it potentially make it easier for the residents as well, who have difficulty, from my understanding, parking, particularly, you know, in the winter. So it might, it might help in regards to parking as well.
Because some of those houses, I don't think really have driveways, do they?
I think they've come a long way. I think there are driveways now, but it's still difficult. I know at all times of the year because sometimes they have more than one car, they're parking on the street, and whatever have you. So by making it a one-way, it may, make it easier for emergency vehicles to move along and for residents to park and improve the flow on that street. So that's the essence of the project. Again, this project would be starting with an engineering design. So the Brookfield will hire an engineer, and we have a public participation process. People can comment during this design phase. And then once it's designed, it will go up to bid for full construction. So, you know, the, the tag is quite high because it's, it's a long street, and there's a significant amount of drainage that is involved. Drainage is kind of forced from the hillside, and several residents have expressed how that often impacts them. And I know it crosses the street in some areas and sometimes ices up. So drainage is a really important factor in this particular project. And it's a full rehabilitation. So unlike, you know, it's other projects done by the highway, which would come along and do an overlay, no, we're going to fully rehab this street to, to make the improvements long-lasting. So that, that's the essence of the, the one project that we're, we're putting forth as part of this community development block program for the FY 22/23 program.
All right, and this has already been through our Brookfield CDBG committee as well, correct?
Actually, let me, let me, we, first of all, I wasn't aware that there was a CDBG advisory committee. So what we did was, it was Dennis, Ryan, Kathy, myself, and Chris, and we met just as people who work on the projects, not as a committee.
Okay.
And so we identified that, and everybody was on board to do it. I have since found out, much to my own embarrassment, because I should have checked this first, that there was a committee, you're on it.
I know. I know, but I figured I missed the meeting, which happens.
No, no, and so I was, first I was told there was no committee. And then I was told that there were people who were appointed, but nobody was sworn in. And then I was told that the people that I thought were appointed, that were sworn in, weren't actually appointed, they were just sworn in. And, long story short, too late, the committee actually has not seen or met or done anything with, since I've been here because we didn't, I didn't realize it was a committee. So I sent Chris an email today going, okay-
I can say this, I have worked with the committee in the past, wonderful group.
It seems like one that they would, that they would approve.
I would say that I've looked at other documentation in the town. This project is part of the town's prioritization plan.
Yep.
And it has been vetted, it's been looked at before. It's, it's definitely a priority project from the highway department's point of view. The water district says he's in desperate need of the hydrants that are, could fail, you know, because of the age and some of the, the equipment involved. So, so it's a priority project, it's on your prioritization plan, and I'm more-
It sounds familiar, because it sounds like, because I remember seeing it on the plan. Do you remember where it landed on our original plan?
I think COVID kind of sort of disrupted the flow. I think that would be fair, maybe. COVID sort of disrupted the flow of regular gatherings of this particular appointed committee.
So as I continue to hang my head in shame, I sent Chris an email today saying, please include, here are all the emails whenever we're going to meet and talk about the projects now that, yes, so.
So it's a great group, and I, I think it could take some of the burden away from the, the board of selectmen to sort of vet things a little bit and present, you know, priority issues to the board when they arise. And, you know, the timing is great to reassemble this group, as far as I see it, because we're just getting rid of- just getting ready to launch improvements on Green Street through the already-funded FY 21 CDBG. And now here we are, meeting as a community to talk about the FY 2223. And moving forward, let's, let's get it on and start piecing this puzzle together and making improvements throughout the community.
Deep breath, it's okay.
I just came from another public hearing, I will.
It's all right.
Sorry.
Okay, no, it's all right, it's okay. So I don't, I, I mean, if we had had a committee meeting, I don't see it subjecting, because it was on the plan the last time we reviewed the long-term plan, if I remember correctly. Am I remembering correctly? Do you, do you remember? Because I seem to remember seeing this on the long-term plan.
Yeah, it's been talked about, but I think the current feeling is the CDBG is road service, which is much more than that. The grants have been available for years for studies or other things.
Right.
Stephen, this is more than a road, I mean, it's drainage, it's a lot of stuff.
Right, but it, it is not always.
Infrastructure.
Infrastructure, right.
I know historically.
The last project was Hyde and Hayden, and you had Green Street.
Not Kimball. I mean, part of it is housing rehab and studies and senior center and all of that, which seems to have been just aside.
I will say there is, those things are definitely eligible, housing, planning studies, other designs, public facilities, but it's hard to identify qualified projects, aside from housing rehab, that fit within the criteria of the CDBG program. So, and, you know, the, the work at the senior center, at the senior center, work involving possible facility for seniors is ongoing, to my understanding. You know, we're, we're, we're just to continue to look at this.
Yeah, well, the, the community, the, the voluntary group that stood up basically said that they wanted to come back in a while after they've set up more programs before they really consider a senior center, right? So, um, so I think that was one of the other ones, you're right, that was on the priority list, and I think right now we've tabled just from other discussions with other members in the community right now. It does, I, I haven't seen an aggregated, like, housing rehab, because usually we do that with other communities.
You currently have an open grant with the town of North Brookfield for housing rehabilitation, which is stalled for a myriad of different reasons that aren't really germane to this particular hearing tonight, but I'd be happy to go to it.
So I tell you what, we don't need to go into it as part of this public hearing tonight, but what I would like to understand is that if there's anything that we can do to un-stall that and make it, make, since the money's already there, right? So I think to your point, there's other things we could be using it for, but we already have some of those other things funded, and then for some reason it's stalled, right? Versus, and it sounds like the, the, one of the reasons why we're tending to be biased towards infrastructure work is because of that ease of project definition and justification.
And it's not easy to come up with a million and a half dollars to fix a road.
Right. So, um, what I'd like to do is, is take a look at what's before us, which, which I remember being on the overall CDBG plan, so it's not like we're, we're going like. Yeah, it's been there right along, so it's, so we're not, we're not deviating from like the original advice and intent of the committee, if that makes any sense. But I would like to follow up on the, since we have housing money out there that's not being utilized, what do we need to do to unstick it? Okay? So that then we can take the learning from that, and when we're, you know, for, you know, drag me over the coals for using this term, when we're looking at 2024, we can consider what do we do besides roadwork? Because I think it's legitimate feedback, but I understand also wanting to complete the, the roadwork in the center of the village and just be done with it fundamentally. So, I mean, I think you can make a case either way. And, you know, it's shovel-ready, it, it's something we can, we can really focus on and will potentially benefit what, how many houses are along that street? I think there's probably like thirty-ish. Yeah, close to thirty, yeah, between twenty and thirty probably.
So a couple of houses are within the previous project area.
Yeah, that's right, yeah, yeah, you're right. So, but, um, it, it's, it seems like, to me at least, it seems like something that makes sense.
In addition, I, I like to say, you know, what I mean with the original means that, you know, you're applying these resources that are available to areas that are eligible, so you can use your own resources for other areas of the community that aren't. And I think Ryan could appreciate that, because I know how, how scarce, you know, Chapter 90 money is and trying to stretch that. So we can, if we can make these sort of improvements in, like, the village centers where they're presumably eligible a good part of the time, it allows him to, to use his monies elsewhere.
Yeah. So, um, but, very good feedback, and I agree with you. I think we eventually need to get out of the roadwork business, but this will actually complete that package, and I think it's the last eligible roadwork project.
But this is design, engineering.
Yes.
And we'll have to go for construction?
No, this is design, engineering, and construction, it's the whole, whole package. So we won't be stuck with another design sitting on somebody's desk somewhere that we can't do nothing about.
Running out of road services.
Yeah.
There is a map for this.
Yeah, yeah.
They do allow a longer performance period for this particular grant, and they combined it, and the normal programmatic period is eighteen months. This will be twenty-four months, and presumably enough time to do the design work and the construction within that performance period.
Though, there's not a lot of leeway, you've got to move pretty quick to get design and everything done during that period of time, so.
But, you know, I, I just want to thank, you know, your highway and the water district and, and your town administrator, they've been instrumental in helping put this thing together and define the needs and, and, you know, get it going under this aggregation.
Okay. Any other comments, questions?
I, I just said, so you're going to maintain the same property? You're not going to widen it or?
Well, we hope to widen it a little, but there's not a lot of room on the.
Not a lot of space.
Those houses are right up in there.
It has to be within, uh, within the right of widening.
Right. So your, all of your drainage structure or modifications will be within that, right?
They would have to be unless, I mean, some sort of easement is determined necessary, but we don't foresee that at this point in time.
Right.
Mr. Brannish?
Things that just won't play, but I don't understand general administrative functions, like planning, travel, and advertising, how that relates to this project. Who provided the general administrative work for the Central Street project? Was that done outside of?
That was done outside of CDBG, that was, that was a different grant altogether.
Okay, but who, who got paid for that?
The engineer did, yeah, there were two engineering firms.
Two separate lots of money?
For, for the administrative?
Yes. Yeah, for overseeing the project, there are two different pots of money.
It's like project manager.
Yeah, yeah. And the highway department did a lot of it and saved the town a lot of money for that as well.
It's a fair question, it's a complicated program, a lot of different nuances associated with the administration of CDBG reporting at multiple levels, and so that's the administrative agency will help with the advertising, uh, be conducting some of the public hearings.
What advertising?
What would happen?
You have to have public hearings and advertising, and it has to go in, it has to go in the paper. Yeah, you have to, yeah, like, so if you're going to have a public hearing, you have to advertise it.
What people are who wrote?
No.
There'll be a procurement process for both the engineering and the construction, which our organization will help steer. You know, and, and because we're involved, and we're a regional planning agency that doesn't have a building that's funded by taxpayers, so part of that overall administration is referred to as overhead, which actually gives us a place to have a, a, a desk and a chair and a, and a computer in which to work on.
So basically, they fetch us a million dollars and we help keep them in business so they can fetch us another million dollars.
That's essentially it, yeah.
Yeah. So.
So I've only minutes before the application date, even if they're just a draft form to demonstrate.
And what's the application date, Chris?
March 3rd, two weeks essentially.
All right. So can we prioritize tonight's minutes, please? Thank you, Karen.
Sorry.
So, um, do you want to go and make a motion? There's a proposed motion on the second page.
There we go. Uh, so I make a motion that the town approves the submission of the proposed FY 20222023 Brookfield CDBG grant application and their respective activities to the DHCD with allowance for minor budget or program adjustments, and furthermore authorizes the CEO to sign required forms when prepared. The Central Massachusetts Regional Planning Commission will assist the town with the overall management of the grant if funded.
I'll second that.
Do you want it to be CEO, because that's you?
I was going to say, is CEO?
That's you.
That's me?
Yeah. Do you want me to be able to sign them because you've approved the plan? That way you don't have to come down and sign anything and things can get signed on time?
This is a little bit more restricted.
Okay, all right, that's fine.
Yeah, I think actually the select may have to be able to sign. So do we need to designate the, so does a CEO, and just for clarification purposes in this, with, for CEO, does that mean that we need to have a, a quorum of the board, or is it just the chair?
No, it's the chair.
No, I'm asking tonight that they allow you to just go ahead and sign when I finish preparing all the documentation.
That's fine. And all you have to do is text me and I can walk over, so. All right. Um, at least overnight.
Did you move that first?
Not always during the business day, but if you, if you text me during the day, you'll, you'll, like fairies, I'll have signed documentation the next day.
That's nice.
Okay, so I'll second that, all in favor?
Right.
Aye. All right, that's a wrap on that.
I did have, like, number six, briefly, of the CDBG, very quickly.
Sure.
I just want people to know that we, we are advancing the Green Street project, and we are preparing to send out construction bid documents within the near future, and hopefully it comes within budget, will, will break ground, you know, the spring on, on Green Street. And it will be disruptive, because that project, that is not just a street replacing the water line and doing some of the drainage, much shorter, but there are multiple components involved, so I just want people to be aware that the Green Street project is on its way soon.
Okay. So, that's, I do feel like our town bird is the orange construction barrel at this one, so, I guess there's worse things, so. Thank you for that. Anything else, sir?
I just want, on behalf of CMRPC, I want to thank, uh, for, you know, terrific relationship that we're building with Brookfield. I know some of my colleagues are working with you on, on other endeavors, and, and we stand ready to assist in, in any way that we can, so.
Great. Could, could somebody mark it on the calendar? Would somebody from your organization be available to maybe come in our next meeting and talk about that, the stranded rehab money between us and North Brookfield?
Yeah, that would be me.
Do you want to meet with the CDBG people?
Yeah, why don't we do that?
Do that instead of a selectments meeting, and then you can report it back to the selectmen.
Why don't we do that?
I think, great, so we'll, we'll.
Then you can all organize and tell me how you want to be contacted.
Yeah, yeah, so we'll see if, we need to get one on the calendar then.
I encourage people to sign for calendar.
Even if we have to make it on, I, I don't know, I know that the town hall is technically closed on Fridays, but that's usually my freest day.
There's nothing wrong with you using it as long as you open it up to the public during the time of your meeting.
Okay. So, okay, let's do that. Awesome, thank you.
Thank you so much for having me, and nice seeing you both.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Oh, sure.
Is there something else for you to sign in there?
Gotcha, what's that?
Is there something else for you to sign in there, in that folder?
I don't believe so. We had. Oh, yeah, anybody that's not signed in, can you please sign in?
There's two, I actually have a special one for the town.
Oh, here it is, a memorandum of agreement, oh.
Thank you, Karen.
Okay, do we, do, okay, so we need, well, and this is, is, do I need, do we need to vote this separately, or is that part of the motion that we just made?
That's the agreement to have CMRPC work for.
You sort of, you sort of made the motion about, you're, you're asking us to help you administer the grant, we're going to work one, we're going to do this grant.
Yep, and this is how you guys do it? We've seen that before, perfect.
All right, so do you want the, you want the original?
That's okay.
And we'll just.
Can you make a copy before you go?
Or if you want to send me the, the sign-in and the, that.
Oh, you want me to send it together, okay. Well, okay, well, yours do.
Well, why don't you just make a copy for, just make a copy for that. Thank you, Karen, for keeping me straight on the paperwork. Okay. Yeah, Dennis, thank you for supporting all of this.
And Ryan.
And Ryan. The real brains of the outfit, the two of yous.
There you go.
Good project.
Yeah. Okay, so that allows us to transition back to everybody's favorite topic, budget.
Good night, folks, thank you.
Good night, thank you, Chris.
Actually, you know, while we're, while we're, while we're not talking budget, let me just redo the correspondence real quick and get it out of the way, and then we'll go back to budget. So we've got a notice from Charter that they're going to launch stellar TV in high definition on channel 178 or 201, depending on your channel, channel lineup. We've got another notice from Charter that we've got the Charter Communications Annual Complaint Form 500 for 2022, and apparently we had two complaints with average resolution time of three, whatever that means. Quote above is.
Weeks, days, nobody knows.
Four to seven days, four to seven days, so. Uh, and then we have a notice of public, Department of Public Utilities Notice of Filing in Public Hearing, um, relative, it's dated February 9th, um, indicating that National Grid submitted to the Department of Public Utilities for review and approval a capital investment project. Let's see here, I'm trying to bring some synopsis to this. So here, National Grid's improvement proposal is designed to make, um, electric power system modifications to allow, um, distributed generation facilities to interconnect in and around Auburn, Brookfield, Charlton, Lester, North Brookfield, Oxford, Rutland, Spencer, Webster, Westbrookfield, and Worcester, Mass. And basically, it supports solar facilities being easier to integrate into the grid. Let's see here. The total cost of the system upgrades will be eight point, eighty-seven point nine million dollars, and it will enable close to a hundred thousand kilowatts of distributed, uh, generation to interconnect into the company's, uh, main system. Let's see here. It will, a typical resident, um, using 600 kilowatt-hours electricity per month will experience a monthly bill increase of thirteen cents in order to support that capital project. There's a whole bunch of other language. Any person who desires to participate in the evidentiary phase of this proceeding shall file a petition for leave to intervene no later than close of business 5:00 p.m. on Wednesday, February 22nd. There's a whole bunch of legal, uh, requirements that it should meet. And one copy of written comments on the Attorney General's Notice of Retention must be mailed to Elizabeth Mahoney, Assistant Attorney General. The email can be provided for anybody who wants a copy of this communication. Let's make sure this one gets posted up on the, our town website, if you don't mind. That way it's out there for everybody to see if they want to read it. Okay, um, so let's go back to the budget.
You can do it, that'd be great.
Thank you. Was there anything relative to the budget that you wanted to talk about on a high level, like some of the aggregations or changes or anything, or was there anything else that you wanted to cover expressly in this meeting?
I, I just wanted you to think about the COLA and, and what, how you want to approach it. The budget presented the way it is, if it's voted exactly as it is, and there are no further reason appropriates. reason appropriates, we have no revenue information whatsoever.
Right.
So, there's no way for me to project how close we are to the legislative limit. There's no way for me to know what it will do to the tax rate. I don't have...
Any of that information.
Any of the data that would make voting on any of this...
Responsible.
Yeah, at this point.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, you know, I would recommend that you choose a COLA, whichever method you choose to use and whichever COLA you choose to use and apply it across the board excluding, obviously, contracts that are exempt from and have their own increases.
Right.
So...
Beth?
Yes?
Make your comment just...
Sure.
...on set-wise with the COLA. We've said this every year, that like we really prefer a bunch of level funding for wages, partly because it's logistically really hard to take it out of the budget and then put it back into the budget when we're voting on them. But even more important than that, I think it would be great if from the top down, we encouraged departments to level on their wages, knowing that you guys are gonna make a decision on what an appropriate COLA is and we're gonna make our recommendation. But it just seems like we do use cost of living adjustments to, you know, reward employees and try to market, keep the COLA, and we should. But it almost like works against us to have them all put in 8.7% and then take it away from them. It's like they all submit their budgets with this higher number.
Yeah, and it's a valid point. I think the challenge is, is that the...putting it in as level funding, and we've done that year over year over year over year, has been just as disruptive and problematic because then the perception is we're not gonna get nothing unless somebody starts fighting for it. And historically, it's just turned...that's what has turned a lot of this into poor communication and very frustrating process. So, if we were...if we had a better history of actually executing it the way you just described it, I would totally agree with you. I think in this instance, you know, department heads can propose what they want to propose. I'd like part of the discussion when the department heads go in, if somebody asked for 8.9%, but it wasn't because of the COLA, it was because of, I don't know, maybe somebody sat down and actually took a look at what the step impact was gonna be on their wages and maybe the person who's 7.9% put it in because they put in a 3% COLA, but a bunch of their people are hitting a different step in grade and that's why they put their budget in that way, then that's the discussion that I feel like we need to have with the department heads. Do you know what I'm saying?
From a process standpoint too, like there could be something in place where if they're increasing their wages for a reason other than a COLA, like maybe there could be a process in place where like they have to go to the personnel board before they do that. And like their budget should reflect, because the budget is what we're putting towards that budget and not necessarily if they're gonna get paid unless it's...
Right, and honestly, the budget doesn't actually technically directly impact a person's wages.
That's what I'm saying.
Right?
So, if they want a raise, there should be a process other than so many of sales rich because of a higher number on it that doesn't actually give them a raise, it just puts more money in that account.
But I don't understand that. Of course, it does give them a raise, it directly impacts.
Well, technically, technically, no.
If you put in a wage...
So, technically, no. Technically, when we're voting the budget, we're voting that that money is available. But there's nothing that says that we're obligated to actually write that into the checks that way fundamentally.
I don't think that's actually accurate. I think that if you...if the town votes a wage for a specific position, that position gets that wage. It doesn't matter if they take it as a lump sum, it doesn't matter if they take it hourly or how it's split up, they get that amount of money. When it's a lump in a department, that's different.
Well, that's what I'm talking about.
But 90% of these are individual people. You've got three...two departments or three departments that it's lumped?
Yep, I see what you're saying.
So, it does actually give people a raise.
Yeah, so for a lot of these, it does actually give them a raise, yeah.
But you're right about the department with multiple employees, that's different, where it's not specifically spelled out.
And I think the place where it's more problematic for them to understand what's being submitted is in the departments, because I think when there's multiple employees, that's where you can't see it.
Yeah, it's hard to back into that number.
So...
Is that just a COLA or are they asking for a raise or are they asking for another plea?
So, what you're saying is like, I'm just going down on the list. So, the treasurer wage, that should just be level at 78,000.
I'm saying from a process standpoint, I think it would make sense for them to understand that department, like your budget is level funded until the slide one.
Oh, yeah.
Because it's a COLA.
It's a messy operation to set up an Excel spreadsheet and not know that you're bringing a level funded wage or...
An inflation adjustment, right.
And then you're gonna have another column that's going to apply the COLA that's determined by the board's level. But it makes it messy, that's why we take the process of using...
What's that?
No, I'm sorry.
No, but you can't level fund because you have people who are...
No, 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 we're not trying to level fund, we're just trying to make it clean in an Excel spreadsheet to apply the COLA. That's the whole thing.
Yeah, but I see what you're saying.
Yeah, but...
But above me on the COLA, you have people who are moving up a step.
Right.
And that should be noted.
Yeah, in the police department, yeah.
And that should be noted in the budget request.
But the only ones who move up step in grade are the police.
Well, technically, we do, I think technically...
No, you did not approve the steps, you only approved the grades at the meeting.
Okay.
So, there's no steps for the other employees, it's just the PD and it's in their CBA.
Okay. Yeah.
Now, one more comment. You have the opposite problem this year about, you mentioned previously about department heads worrying about being level funded and being upset about that. This year, you've got the opposite problem. You've got people who have submitted 8.7% COLAs and I've talked to two department heads who are very unhappy that they're hearing that they may not get that 8.7%.
Well, people might not be happy.
Well, I'm just telling you...
No, and I get it. And I get it, and I get it because, and originally, we made a statement and we stood by it two or three years ago, we said we were gonna follow COLA, right? Again, federal COLA. I don't...I think if we start having the conversation now, people can be upset, okay?
I'm just telling you that we're...
And you know what? They may be upset. And you know what?
So be it.
Well, I don't want to say that, but I think if we have...
I appreciate your respect.
I think if we have reasonable conversations about it, I think if we do appropriate homework and make sure that we're taking into consideration, you know, not just local market, but within what people would consider, you know, kind of reasonable pure towns, because there's a lot more metrics besides distance that mean it's the right kind of math problem if we're being equitable about stuff.
Well, when you get the Collins report, you didn't even went to towns that were very expensive towns.
No, they did.
I checked, I checked some of the towns and went comparable. Where did this 8.7 come from? I mean, where did the 8.7?
It is the federal COLA this year.
That's where the federal COLA is.
Is that where you got it from?
Yeah.
Yep, because that's what they said.
I don't think that the towns used effective over.
So...
But other towns didn't say at town meeting that they would.
That they would.
So, that's kind of where the...
You should have a process.
That's kind of where the disconnect is, is that they're relying on what was said...
Right.
With, when it was said, I mean, federal COLA is typically 1 and 2%.
It was running like between 2 and 4%.
Yeah.
Right? So, at the time.
That's the phone calls that I got too.
Yep.
Same as Marty has on the sheet.
So, well, no, what I'm saying is that at the time, for years, I mean, literally, probably if we looked at your research, probably for like 10 years prior to that, federal COLA had been between 1.5 and like 4%.
Right, and so when that promise was made...
So, when the statement was made, it was a perfectly reasonable...
It was anticipated that it would be a lower.
Right.
And it's typically lower than the state cost of living, yeah.
So, you know, people may be upset. I get that, okay, but we're gonna start having that dialogue now. And it's not because we don't think people deserve a decent wage or a decent standard of living, but the...our goal with saying that we were gonna do the federal COLA was that once we did the adjustments for the Collins Center, that we maintain our wage parity relative to the market. And COLA and salary, like market value, don't always track exactly, okay? So, we need to figure out what's reasonable and fair to both the townspeople and the employees, right?
So, at the time the statement was made that you would use the federal COLA, the federal COLA hadn't gone over 1.7 in the prior 10 years.
So, would you...
So, it was not, it was not a, hey, we're gonna like make everybody rich off of this COLA and give...
It was to keep everybody whole.
It was keep everybody whole. It's just a fluke that it's gone up because of the economy over the last couple of years.
So, would you...
I anticipate it'll die.
Do you think it should have been voted with a cap?
It was never voted.
It was never voted, it was just a promise made by the board and by the finance, the advisory committee. It wouldn't even be a discussion if they hadn't said it. That's why, the people are relying on what they perceived as a promise, that's all.
Okay.
It's not a rule.
Yeah.
It was a guideline.
Yeah, it's a guideline.
Yeah.
So, but I think it needs to be a thorough and transparent discussion with people.
And I'm assuming it's gonna come up at the department head meeting?
I'm sure it will. I'm sure it will. And we're not hiding it, right?
Oh, no, absolutely not. I sent the same spreadsheet that I sent to you with the comparatives with all of the towns, so everybody knows that the local towns and the towns that responded when I did the outreach are roughly between 2 and 6 with extenuating circumstances. The spreadsheet lists all that.
Right.
But the average is 3.7% if you average all of them together.
Right.
And if you take out your outliers, it's gonna be...
And probably if we added these in, it might take it down to like 3.2 or something like that.
Right, but if you pull out your outliers, we got a couple of towns in there that are zeros because they don't know what they're gonna do yet, us being one of them.
Right.
Because I certainly didn't put in the 8.7 for Brookfield because...
Right, we don't know.
Right.
So, so I think, I think we have, I think we have that dialogue in the department head meeting. I think we just keep it transparent and...
And that's why I sent it to them, so that it would be transparent.
And try to do what's reasonable for everybody, so. Yes, Marty?
I have another handout for the boards?
Sure.
That's it, I ask you a question?
You may.
Why is Thomas not here again? He comes in late, he leaves early, he's not here. Is there a reason that he...
He's an elected official, my good sir. Why do any of our...
If you're elected and you're representing us people in Brookfield, just do what you want. That's the attitude in Brookfield, that's the attitude that I'm getting, that's what I'm starting to see in this town. So, I just ask you a question, is there a reason why he isn't showing up? That's all I wanna know. And I'm being pretty blunt and to the point, but I just...
Wouldn't it make more sense to ask him that question?
Yeah.
It would, but I figured you guys are on the board, so I figured you might have an answer for me today. So, I will ask him that directly then, if I see him.
We have a quorum, at least we're a functioning town unit.
Which is good.
That's a good thing.
But it's like south people.
It's nice, it's nice, but it's not mandatory. There's days I'm not here, Dave, I've missed a couple meetings.
Yeah, you don't do too bad, I've been watching.
I figured. I might get a B minus, but I'm getting a passing grade at 10. Got it, okay.
Just again?
Okay, well, you know how Bobby Barnes is always...
But I love, though, how you cut this off and you don't include all the stuff about what's commercially available to the tax base and other things that impact this.
This is all that comes out of this report.
There's, if this came out of the, if this came out of, if this came out of DLS?
Yes, it came out of DLS.
It's got all of the, it should have the commercial and industrial off on the right-hand side.
Not the report, I didn't...
Okay, well then...
What's, what's...
Okay, so then what's your point?
Okay, well, Bobby Barnes has always told me, you know, we are more expensive than we have a talent in terms of the property tax.
Okay.
So, I sent the DLS to approve or disapprove what he's telling me.
Okay.
And according to this table of these 11 neighboring towns, Brookfield is number two in two significant categories, the single family tax bill and average tax bills of percent of income.
Okay.
Okay, so income has absolutely nothing to do with how taxes are done.
But it has something to do with the effect on the taxpayer.
Right, but it has nothing to do with how the taxes are done, so it's...
Just trying to say, this is what the taxpayers pay with.
They look pretty darn close to the same size bill.
So, it's about a, it's...
It's just a taxpayer perspective on the town spending money, that's all. Something to take into account with it.
So, I'm gonna go back to you and let me just...
Can I just say something?
Through me, yes.
Marty, if you're using Bobby Barnes as a youngster, be careful.
And the other thing I'm gonna tell you is this is not complete data, it doesn't include commercial, it doesn't include the industrial, which plays a huge role. So, let me finish, I let you finish, let me finish, and it's, okay. So, industrial and commercial plays a huge role in what the burden is on the residential taxpayer, okay? What we have is not necessarily an overall dollars problem, it's a planning and making this community something besides a bedroom community problem, okay? The communities that have the lower tax rates, if you had the rest of this data on this spreadsheet, which it might not be in the one that you pulled it from, and I get it, but we can go fetch it out of DLS, okay, is that without that industrial and commercial tax base, okay, the burden on our residents is going to be higher to provide the same services. That's a fact.
But if you look at the bills, they're almost exactly the same, all these different rates.
There's a 20% difference in the tax bills from the top to the bottom.
Now, where does education...
But all the rates are different.
Where does the educational cost come in to factor with any of those?
So, the way that that would factor in is as part of the, I mean, the, your overall budget, and that's some of the other information that's missing off of this.
Right.
So, if we want to talk about it, we need to include the one that has the pivot of where the money goes. And you can actually see in the same data set how much of it goes to education, how much of it goes to public safety, how much of it goes to, I can't remember the categories, general government. There's all these categories that are also included in the same data set.
Because the way I looked at this originally was...
The categories are actually on your budget.
If you look at, if you look at East Brookfield under Brookfield...
General, total public safety, total...
It's 4,000. Well, to me, I'd rather pay the extra 800 to live in Brookfield to send my kids to the school system versus that school system.
Legit.
You live in Brookfield, they don't have a school system, you don't...
Yeah, but they don't have a good school system. Yeah. Just because they have it doesn't mean it's good.
And look at the impact of what's gonna happen in East Brookfield in a year or so in reference to these school expenses. Look at East Brookfield and the impact that it's gonna be felt in town with the water work. Look at the impact in Spencer on expensive ways, but that aren't in these figures, but they could be...
They will be.
When they have to cough up the money, their taxes are gonna shoot up.
So, we're ahead of the curve.
Right, because we paid for these things in advance, functionally, yeah. We've actually been paid to go, so.
In reference to your argument about not having a large commercial base to spend money, then if we don't have that commercial base to fund the nice things that we want to have in Brookfield, then we don't fund them. That's another perspective.
Unless the taxpayers want to, right?
Right.
So, at the end of the day, we advise, and at the end of the day, the advisory committee advises, and then at the end of the day, the town votes. So, you know, I agree from a, and from a policy perspective, Marty, it's up to us to set the tone. It's kind of like the discussion we just had around wages, okay? I don't think anybody in this town would accuse me of having been miserly with the employees, either when I was on the advisory committee or since I've been on the board of selectmen. But even I'm not willing to raise my hand and say the right thing to do is an 8.7% increase, I'm sorry, I can't go there, okay? Right, I'll just, I'll just say it, okay? And anybody want, most of the folks that are going to be angry have my cell phone number, so if they want to blow it up between now and midnight, I'll answer my phone, okay? But at the, at the end of the day, right, it's about being fair and reasonable, okay? You know what, we're not gold plating the roads, we're going out, we're getting grants, we're trying to get this stuff paid for mostly with, you know, it's our money coming back to us from the state and federal, so I don't feel guilty about it, right? Okay, and you're right, our community has needs, that's why we're eligible for the CDBG money in the village, right? It's because not everybody's rich in town, right? It is what it is. But you know what, you can, we could talk about this all day long, the town's going to make the decision, right? We should make reasonable, responsible recommendations. But not taking care of keeping the lights on, keeping the roads plowed, and keeping them well-maintained is not a reasonable discussion. Cutting our nose off despite our face with regards to our educational system is, is not where I want to go, right? I want them educated so that maybe there will be social security when I get to your age, okay? Because they need to be able to be making some money to be paying for me.
I want them all educated because they have me running my nursing home.
Well, there you go.
I don't want uneducated people in that position, so.
Right, right.
I never, ever, ever want to use an ambulance, but I'm more than happy to pay my tax bill so that we have one.
Okay, right, so.
There's some things that we need that we hope we never have.
So, I mean, and, and I'm interested to find out what we think we're gold plating in this town, because you know what, Dave, I know you think I'm a little bit of a spend thrift, but I haven't gold plated anything recently.
I hope not.
Okay, all right, so, all right, so, that's what I'll say about that, so, and, and you know what, I will read everything you give me, but be careful, because I may start handing you back other stuff that's got other data on there, because you know what, I'm really good at statistics, and you're right, if you pick the right data set, you can prove anything. But you're picking your data set to prove one thing, somebody else can pick their, their data set to prove another thing, we just need to have a discussion and try to do the right thing, okay?
These facts explicitly show that we have a higher property tax burden than nine other towns in our area.
And I will tell you, and I will tell you that our townspeople have made those decisions, and we have lowered the, the actionable rate per thousand every year for the last.
Oh, yes, and there have been many people who have told me, how come my taxes went up a great way down?
Well, you know.
You can say that, but it's not the bottom line, the tax bill grew up dramatically in this town, the answer is, so, that's all that matters. You can talk on your assessment, you talk about the taxes were down, but what's the bottom line on the tax bill that you have?
Do you think anybody's tax bill's been going down the last five years?
I don't think so.
Okay, so, so.
So the bottom, the bottom line here is that we only collect what the taxpayers vote to.
Collect.
Collect. We don't collect a dime more, not a penny. So if people want to change this, like Beth said, we can argue this all day long, we can discuss it, we can even decide that this isn't how it's going to be, but the town is going to vote what the town is going to vote, we're going to do what they tell us, because they're really the boss. So people need to come out and vote and, and participate in the, in the town meeting and the discussions, because that's where the decision is made. The 70 people that come out to vote to the annual town meeting are the people that actually determine what the tax bills are going to be.
Yep.
There's also a huge portion attached to, you don't have any say on it, basically.
Which is the school.
And you're, I mean, so, so now you're talking about 12%?
Yeah.
12% of the total budget you can.
You can control.
Control.
Mm-hmm, yep, that's about it. And we fight over that 12% like nobody's business.
As I said the other day, you go to a town, town meeting, and they want to give the cemetery worker 20 cent raise, and they'll argue that for 20 minutes, they'll present the school budget for $7 million, and there will be one question and it, and it goes away.
Yep, that's true.
True.
So, anyhow, and that is one of the reasons why we have a fully independent school board, is because they don't want us really opining on that. And the state set it up that way for a reason.
But it's also why there needs to be close communication with them to understand.
What's going on.
What's going on.
Yep.
You know, I'm not saying you need to set up a school board, but there needs to be dialogue, because they believe in the school board because that's where the money is.
Yep, very true. So, anything else for the budget for tonight?
No, I just, I just wanted to get it in your hands as soon as I could and have you start thinking about what.
What we, what we're going to do.
What you're going to do with the COLA.
Makes sense.
So.
So, anything else on the topic for Brad?
Mm-hmm.
Great discussion tonight, one and all, so. All right, do we have a motion?
Motion to adjourn at 7:59.
I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Another thing that, that people don't realize is that the cherry sheet.
I know.